इनका मार्गन लो नटवर्ड पिड़िबिड़ लंदर ने गुड़ा सकालामलो त्वरपेट्टी मेरा नड़पिंचमणी प्रार्थिष्ठन नाम मदत निम्शम्मदल को निच्छिवर वरक कुड़ा प्रभाव मीर माक तोड़े यूं दी मम्मे मेरे नड़पिंची मेरा महिमा पन्दा मणि एवकरम मिसन इधर ने कालीगे वेलकुंडा प्रभाव मी माटलो मेरा माक विनिपिम्प चेंज नाथो माटले डेंडी मातो माटले डेंडी माझ जीवतालो मी मार्गमलो नर्चकुड़ा निकसाहय चेंज तन प्रभु नाकु तगिनट्यू नड़ूमो नी ईचन ट्वेंटी अकम शान के मी कोण नालो आम शंपा ये ध्यान इस्तंत नगा नोटन अंगा मेरे नाथो मातो माटले डेंडी बिने चोलनु ग्रहिंचे हृदय मणि दाईच्या एंडी प्रियतन री मी अका मंदिरमु मी प्रजलनु पोशिंचे ट्वेंटी दिगा उड़ानिकसाहय चेंज प्रभाव मी अका संगमु मी प्रजलु मी वाक्यानिकी प्रतिस्पन्दिंचे ट्वेंटी प्रजलगा मम्मलंदनी मेरे सिद्ध पर्चमणी मिसन इधर प्रार्थिष्ठन नाम केवल मो मार्मन्स मात्रमे का कुंडा प्रभाव मा नड़कलो तनरी मारपुण मेरी तीस कोण डेंडी मालो तनरी नूतन सृष्टि एक गुणमुलर चेता माझ जीवताने मेरे दीविंच अगलरे मिसन इधर प्रार्थिष्ठन नाम मी को आईस्टम इन ए 20 वन्नी कुड़ा माझ जीवतालो नच पेरीकीवे मणि मिसन इधर प्रार्थिष्ठन नाम प्रभाव मी कार्यान्नी नूतन पर्चन डी मायका हृदयमलनु मी करो प्रतिष्ठिंच कोणी अनो दिनमु मी करो कुमंद कोन साउटके मेरे माक सहय चेगलनी प्रार्थिष्ठन नाम मरख सर माक कोर्टल अन्निटिनी मेरा अक्त दारल अक्रिया दिखते इस्तु प्रभाव माक कोर्टल अन्निटलो सम्रुद्ध इन ए 20 देवड़ा वेंट मीमुनु मी क्रूपनु मेम अनुभविंचन नटले मेरे माक सहय चेमणी ई साइंकल कुड़ीके कोरकु ई मी बिड़लो मी संकल्पमलो नटवर्ड मी प्रजल अंधर ने मेरे नड़पिंच महिमा पन्दा मणि प्रार्थिष्ठु ई कुड़ीकनु प्रारम मम्मु नुड़ी चिवर वरक कुड़ा अलग भोजन सहवासमु अन्नी कुड़ा आशीर्वाद करें अच्छा एंडी प्रभाव पार्किंग बदलकोणी प्रभाव सिटिंग वरकु अन्नी विषयलो मिस सहय मुन्नार्पिंपुनु कोरतु बुद्धिहिल्ला इन ए 20 मा ज्ञानम मीरे ननी देव बलहिल्ला इन ए मा बलमु मीरे ननी मी के मम्मे अपगिंच कोणच्या वधनाल चलिस्तु ई कुड़ीकन माक कोरक दीविंचमणी एसु कृष्ट प्रभु नामवना स्तोत्रमलो तो प्रार्थिष्ठु नामो तनरी अमेन लेट जस्ट कुर्चू डेंडी चेरे वाचन ट्वेंटी मी अंदर एक गुड़ा प्रभाव एसु कृष्ट वारी प्रशस्त नामलो शिवबुलंते ले जायचु नाम मोदा टिप बागन लो मनम पाठ्यातो प्रभुनो स्तुतिज्दम मटम मटिगा पाठ्यसंख्या तोम्बिद पाड़ताम सॉन्ग नंबर नाइन [संगीत] ना प्रभु प्रेमिंचनु नन्नु प्रियुडयन कृष्ट प्रेमिंचनु अनर्पण सॉन्ग श्यूट्स एवर कनक आवल अंटे बाद डायन ट्वेंटी वारो चूस वारी डिस्ट्रिब्यूट चेनी लेग पोते कान शेयर जस्कोण पकान वालों [संगीत]
ना प्रभु प्रेमिंचनु ना प्रभु प्रेमिंचनु नन्नु प्रियुडयन कृष्ट प्रेमिंचनु नन्नु प्रियुडयन कृष्ट प्रेमिंचनु नाकै ताने अर्पिंचनु नाकै ताने अर्पिंचनु ना प्रभु प्रेमिंचनु ना प्रभु प्रेमिंचनु प्रेमिंचनु नन्नु प्रेमिंचनु परिमल सुवासन प्रभु आयनु प्रेमिंचनु नन्नु प्रेमिंचनु परिमल सुवासन प्रभु आयनु एहो सन्नीदीलो अर्पिंचनु एहो सन्नीदीलो अर्पिंचनु महाबलीगा प्रिंचनु महाबलीगा प्रिंचनु ना प्रभु प्रेमिंचनु ना प्रभु प्रेमिंचनु [संगीत] शास्वत प्रेमतो प्रेमिंचनु संगमुनु कृष्ट प्रेमिंचनु शास्वत प्रेमतो प्रेमिंचनु संगमुनु कृष्ट प्रेमिंचनु तानिको रक्कु कृष्ट सर्वमिचनु तानिको रक्कु कृष्ट सर्वमिचनु तन प्राणमुनु अर्पिंचनु तन प्राणमुनु अर्पिंचनु ना प्रभु प्रेमिंचनु ना प्रभु प्रेमिंचनु [संगीत] मोदक टायने नन्नु प्रेमिंचनु तन्नु प्रेमिंपनु नेपिंचनु मोदक टायने नन्नु प्रेमिंचनु तन्नु प्रेमिंपनु नेपिंचनु देवुडे प्रेमामायु डनी तिलपिनु देवुडे प्रेमामायु डनी तिलपिनु प्रियमुगा प्रयश्चित तंबायनु प्रियमुगा प्रयश्चित तंबायनु ना प्रभु प्रेमिंचनु ना प्रभु प्रेमिंचनु [संगीत] लोकमुनु एंथो प्रेमिंचनु कार्चनु रक्तमु पापुलकै लोकमुनु एंथो प्रेमिंचनु कार्चनु रक्तमु पापुलकै कड़ीगेलु नन्नु तन प्रत्यमुतो कड़ीगेलु नन्नु तन प्रत्यमुतो नाकै मरनमु सहिंचनु नाकै मरनमु सहिंचनु ना प्रभु प्रेमिंचनु ना प्रभु प्रेमिंचनु [संगीत] प्रभुवानिन्ने प्रेमिंतुनु नी नाममुने प्रेमिंतुनु प्रभुवानिन्ने प्रेमिंतुनु नी नाममुने प्रेमिंतुनु नी रक्षण नाकु प्रियमयनदी नी रक्षण नाकु प्रियमयनदी नीमल दिरमुन प्रेमिंतुनु नीमल दिरमुन प्रेमिंतुनु ना प्रभु प्रेमिंचनु [संगीत] ना प्रभु प्रेमिंचनु नन्नु प्रियुडयन कृष्ट प्रेमिंचनु नन्नु प्रियुडयन कृष्ट प्रेमिंचनु नाकै ताने अर्पिंचनु नाकै ताने अर्पिंचनु ना प्रभु प्रेमिंचनु [संगीत]
सॉन्ग नंबर 23 एसु प्रभु नी संकल्पमुलु मारवू एन्नटिकिनी अंदर गुड़ा कल्सी पाड़ण्डी चाल मंदी पाड़त लेदु उर्कन चूसता [संगीत] ओरेबियंस जो लाइट्स कुद्धी अन्नी वज्जट्ट रुड़ने सम्वेल लाइट्स आर नॉट कमिंग अन्नी फैंस अन्नी लाइट्स [संगीत]
एसु प्रभु नी संकल्पमुलु मारवू एन्नटिकी [संगीत] महाप्रभावमु आयनके युगयुगमुल वरकु महाप्रभावमु आयनके युगयुगमुल वरकु [संगीत] मोशेनु ए परचुकोने तन प्रजलनु विडिपिम्पा मोशेनु ए परचुकोने तन प्रजलनु विडिपिम्पा [संगीत] चेसेनु कागन कार्यमुलु वारी मार्गमुलो चेसेनु कागन कार्यमुलु वारी मार्गमुलो [संगीत] तिलसी ननु नडिपिंचनु वारी नी विसुकतन त्रोवा त्रोसी ननु नडिपिंचनु वारी विसुकतन त्रोवा [संगीत] एसु प्रभु नी संकल्पमुलु मारवू एन्नटिकी महाप्रभावमु आयनके युगयुगमुल वरकु [संगीत] महाप्रभावमु आयनके युगयुगमुल वरकु [संगीत] कुंडा पाईचूपी नावितमुनाने मंदिरमुनु निलिपे [संगीत] कुंडा पाईचूपी नावितमुनाने मंदिरमुनु निलिपे [संगीत] आवरणमुने परचेनु निंदुकतेरवेसे [संगीत] आवरणमुने परचेनु निंदुकतेरवेसे देवु नी कार्यमुलनु मोशे संपूर्णमु चेसे [संगीत] देवु नी कार्यमुलनु मोशे संपूर्णमु चेसे एसु प्रभु नी संकल्पमुलु मारवू एन्नटिकी [संगीत] महाप्रभावमु आयनके युगयुगमुल वरकु [संगीत] सुंदरमुगनु कमेगमु गुडारमुनु कम्मे [संगीत] सुंदरमुगनु कमेगमु गुडारमुनु कम्मे [संगीत] मंदिरमंतयु एहोवा तेजसु तोनिंदन [संगीत] मंदिरमंतयु एहोवा तेजसु तोनिंदन [संगीत] एसु प्रभु नी संकल्पमुलु मारवू एन्नटिकी [संगीत] महाप्रभावमु आयनके युगयुगमुल वरकु [संगीत] महाप्रभावमु आयनके युगयुगमुल वरकु [संगीत] नावन्युनु नी वेघदा अमरुड़ा वगुदेवा [संगीत] नावन्युनु नी वेघदा अमरुड़ा वगुदेवा [संगीत] नीवन्युनाकी चितिवी नी क्रूपनु बट्टी [संगीत] नीवन्युनाकी चितिवी नी क्रूपनु बट्टी [संगीत] महिमा परतुनु एल्ला पुडु इह परमुलयंदु [संगीत] महिमा परतुनु एल्ला पुडु इह परमुलयंदु [संगीत] एसु प्रभु नी संकल्पमुलु मारवू एन्नटिकी [संगीत] महाप्रभावमु आयनके युगयुगमुल वरकु [संगीत] महाप्रभावमु आयनके युगयुगमुल वरकु [संगीत] परिशुद्ध जनमा पाडेदमु कृष्ट प्रभु नी बट्टी [संगीत] परिशुद्ध जनमा पाडेदमु कृष्ट प्रभु नी बट्टी परिशुद्ध देवु नी चित्तमुनु नेरवे चुचु इललो [संगीत] परिशुद्ध देवु नी चित्तमुनु नेरवे चुचु इललो निरतमु महिमा सुतिगनता चल्लिंचेदम एप्पुडु [संगीत] निरतमु महिमा सुतिगनता चल्लिंचेदम एप्पुडु एसु प्रभु नी संकल्पमुलु मारवू एन्नटिकी [संगीत] महाप्रभावमु आयनके युगयुगमुल वरकु [संगीत] महाप्रभावमु आयनके युगयुगमुल वरकु [संगीत]
सॉन्ग नंबर 11 पाड़कुंडो पाटा देवानी आवरणम माकेंतो स्वयस्करम [संगीत] प्रिलरा अंदर गुड़ा पाड़ण्डी मी को स्क्रीन अक्कर इकड़ाएप्पे आसल मेरे एवर ने जूस तुनारो एंज जस्तुनारो गुड़ा कानी पेट टालंटे कस्टम आंदे मनुष्य जूस तुनारा लेथ एब्सेंट माइंड तो उन्नार मेनी पीपल आर नॉट सिंगिंग एंड रेक्वेस्ट सिंगिंग टीम म्यूजिक टीम अलसो एवर वॉइस विन बढ़ाबुद सॉन्ग नंबर 11 मनमंदर एक गुड़ा कल्सी पाड़ता [संगीत] Nivasinchu tathuyo yata nosagimamu. Eh chinchitivini dayan. Junti dharala kannalu. Tene madurima kannalu. Junti dharala kannalu. Tene madurima kannalu. Shrestamau needu vaakula cheta. Mamu trupthi parachumaya. Shrestamau needu vaakula cheta. Mamu trupthi parachumaya. Devani Avaranam. Maakentho Sreyaskaram. Devani Avaranam. Maakentho Sreyaskaram. Okka gadiya ichchatta gadu poota melu. Veeyi dinamula kanteno. Okka gadiya ichchatta gadu poota melu. Veeyi dinamula kanteno. Devani Avaranam. Parishuddasanne dilo ah. Parishuddaatmoni needalo ah. Parishuddasanne dilo ah. Parishuddaatmoni needalo ah. Paripunna hoodayamuto parivartanaputo. Prabune prastuti inchedam. Paripunna hoodayamuto parivartanamuto. Prabune prastuti inchedam. Maadehamen alayam. Kaavali neekenilayam. Maadehamen alayam. Kaavali neekenilayam. Pranappiyudavu bhagamula cheni. Pranappanamu chettunu. Pranappiyudavu bhagamula cheni. Pranappanamu chettumu. Devani Avaranam. Maakentho Sreyaskaram. Devani Avaranam. Maakentho Sreyaskaram. Okka gadiya ichchatta gadu poota melu. Veeyi dinamula kanteno. Okka gadiya ichchatta gadu poota melu. Veeyi dinamula kanteno. Devani Avaranam. Maakentho Sreyaskaram. Devani Avaranam. Maakentho Sreyaskaram. Anandaran kuda kalisi. Song number twenty padukunnam. Iravayav patha. Yehova na ashraya durkama. Na vimocha kuda, na raksha kuda. Anai twenty partanu. Anandaran kuda kalisi. Lechi padha. Madati vachnu. Two, three, four. Anam kochna padha. Schedule all stand up and sing. Song number twenty. Two, three, four. Anamo kochna padha. Yehova na ashraya durkama. Na vimocha kuda, na raksha kuda. Ni dharmashastramen nakku priyamu. Ni devyavakyame adaramu. Ni dharmashastramen nakku priyamu. Ni devyavakyame aaharamu. Yehova niyaminchenu dharmashastramu. Adi entoyada ardamayannadi. Yehova niyaminchenu dharmashastramu. Adi entoyada ardamayannadi. Adi pranam puttarilla jeyuno. Puttihinulakya namukuttinchun. Adi pranamutteppailla theyuno. Puttihinulakya namukuttinchun. Yehova na ashraya durkama. Na vimocha kuda, na raksha kuda. Ni dharmashastramu nakku priyamu. Ni devyavakyame aaharamu. Yehova niupadesambulu. Nirdoshamulu hayunnavi. Yehova niupadesambulu. Nirdoshamulu hayunnavi. Ni dharmamento nirmalamayinadi. Adi entolakentoveluginchun. Ni dharmamento nirmalamayinadi. Adi kanulakentovelugichun. Yehova na ashraya durkama. Na vimocha kuda, na raksha kuda. Ni dharmashastramu nakku priyamu. Ni devyavakyame aaharamu. Ni dharmavidulu satyamayinavi. Abi ento neenyayambulu. Ni nyayavidulu satyamayinavi. Abi ento neenyayambulu. Ni yandu bayamento pavitraamu. Adi nityamu gaanilachunnaadi. Ni yandu bayamento pavitraamu. Adi nityamu gaanu nilachunnaadi. Yehova na ashraya durkama. Na vimocha kuda, na raksha kuda. Ni dharmashastramu nakku priyamu. Ni devyavakyame aaharamu. Ni shasana mu namma dagiyannadi. Santoshaparachunu nayullamu. Ni shasana mu namma dagiyannadi. Santoshaparachunu nayullamu. Bangaru kante priyamayinadi. Juntete ne kante adimalamu. Bangaru kante priyamayinadi. Juntete ne kante adimaduramu. Yehova na ashraya durkama. Na vimocha kuda, na raksha kuda. Ni dharmashastramu nakku priyamu. Ni devyavakyame aaharamu. Chivariga. Pathasankya. Pannindu. I'm sorry. Padihedu. Padihedu. Seventeen. Devuni ki stotramu gaanamu chaitaye manchidi. Madati vachnu chivari vachnu maatra me padukundam. Chivari vachnu padesamayenlo manamo bhai billi payketti padha. Brothers. Brothers. Pillarlo gurchnarande kettu friend side randa peranta. Direct preacher key place. Red carpet varu gurchna chu. Late gochnavallu. Let them occupy that place. Randa kettu veduruk gurchna. Late gochnavali ikkada karaavale ante puncham disturbance ipodu. Move forward. Me mundukkaali sthalal undakunda jusko. Red carpet varu gurchna chu. Atlagi sisters. Kuchu late gochnaval untarayenakala kanaka. Me mundukkaali sthalal lekunda. Kero. Mundukka nekun savariste. Latega joinayevalki. Aukashmanthunde. Kuchu mundukgochna. Devuni ki stotramu gaanamu cheyutaye manchidi. Manamandaramu sutthi gaanamu cheyutaye manchidi. Hirushalemu yehovae. Kattuchunna vaadani. Hirushalemu yehovae. Kattuchunna vaadani. Israeli yulano. Pokucheyu vaadani. Israeli yulano. Pokucheyu vaadani. Devuni ki stotramu gaanamu cheyutaye manchidi. Manamandaramu sutthi gaanamu cheyutaye manchidi. Vakyamunuya pokukku. Teliyajesina vaadani. Vakyamunuya pokukku. Teliyajesina vaadani. Ejanamu kilaguna. Chesinnda ledani. Ejanamu kilaguna. Chesinnda ledani. Devuni ki stotramu gaanamu cheyutaye manchidi. Manamandaramu sutthi gaanamu cheyutaye manchidi.
In the presence of the Lord when we pray if you can. Pradhana chesita pudu. Mokalu nodam devane kastanidu manchidi. Our loving heavenly Father. Premgalama parlo kaputanri. Our gracious and wonderful working God. Krubakala adhutamuli chesitvanti deva. God of Abraham, God of Isaac, God of Jacob, the most high. The possessor of heaven, the almighty God. Abrahamu ishaaku yakobala deva. Bhumi aakasham samastavunu kaligunna twenty deva. Atyunnatmane twenty deva. Thank thee for bringing us to thy blessed presence this evening. In the living and loving name of our Lord and our Savior. Lord Jesus Christ who gave, who allowed us and gave himself for us. Tandri mauli preemichi. Magru tanu tanappugenchukunna twenty daysu krissu pravaka namumlo. Isandra samunam amalandari kiri cheshnandukuri kuvanal chalishtanam. Thank thee for the bond those poured in the hearts of the saints so that they could have these meetings. Prava, neyaka kudikal kaligundani kini dasulekharudiyam lo ichnana twenty baran batinik vandal chalishtanam. Thank thee for thy faithfulness. Ni namakattu anibatinik vandal chalishtanam. With which thou sustain this testimony thus far. Prava intavarki sakshani kaapadnividanam batinik vandal chalishtanam. So we strongly believe they will take us through even in the coming days. Prava raanenu dinalu kuda miru mauli tiskal tarani. Me, me, visvashtanam. These meetings may be a great blessing for all of us. Tandriyaka kudikaluma andariku daasrada karanga chen. Thank thee for those who are already here, pray for those who may be at other ways, bring them soon into our midst. Prava ikkadunnavaribatinik vandal chalishtanam. Inkostunatvanti vaadi markamunnavanik shamanamma madhik tiskarandi. Bless our fellowship together. Ma saavaasani miru devinchandi. We are conscious of the prayers of the saints all over the world for us. Prabancha vyaptanga parishuddulichesna twenty pradhana vishamai me gurtistanam. Thank thee for all those who got connected through Zoom and YouTube not only in India but also abroad. Prav Zoomlo no YouTube daranu baradeshanu maatra me gaakunda. Paaschaadeshan lo navarandaru connectenavarandaru batinik vandal chalishtanam. Bless every one of them. Pratyukkanaasradinchandi. Have them that with great respect and reverence they may sit in thy presence. Prava ento bhaktithoti ni sainidlo unkuchodani kishaapadandi. And thus they may be benefited and be blessed through the ministry of thy word. Tat dhvara ni vakyaparcher dhvara van devinchalsniga pradhistanam. We are honourable servants confess before thee sanctified by thy blood and use us as him as good in thy sight. Prava, me vayogiluvayana upukuntanam. Me sharaaktham cheda kadigandishuddekarinchani. Me durstik istamayne chupunai istamayne, istamayne vidhanam lo malu vaadukunalsniga pradhistanam. Pray for those who are not well in our midst, touch them and heal them. Prava yavare tanarigamama madhilo untanaro alantuani mutti sastaparchani. We bind the powers of darkness in thy mighty name. Chigarshaklanit kuda me balamennam olobandistanam. And we bring out the earth under thy sprinkling blood and pray with thanksgiving. In the precious and sweet name of our Lord and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Mualandari kuda me yaka rakthapraschinkantechkuntu. Vandaramulto ma prabhu nu ma raksha kada ni twenty daysu krissu pravaka madhuramana twenty precious samanati namumlo. Pradhinchiveedukuntu namu tandri. Amen. First Thessalonians. Thessalonians madhatpatrika. Chapter one, chapter two, verse ten, eleven and twelve. Rendodhyemu padipadukundu pannidu vachnalu. Kindly look into the word of God as we read in English and Telugu. English lo no Telugu lo chadivetapudu. Me jay chesi me bhagani kuda miru devunu vakyane chodan. Your witnesses and God also how holyly and justly and unblameably we behaved ourselves among you that believe. As ye know, how we exhausted and comforted and charged every one of you as ye a father does his children. That ye would walk worthy of God who hath called you unto his kingdom and glory. Me me visvashalaina me edutai enta bhaktithonu. Neethiganu, anindiyamu ganu pravarthinchitumo. Dari ki miru sakshil. Devudunu sakshi. Tana rajjamukunu mahimakunu me munupilichuchunna devaniki taginattuga. Miru narichukunavalanani me mu me lo prativani hetcharinchichu. Dharyaparichichu sakshamichichu. Tandri tana bidela narichukunriitiga. Me lo prativani edala me mu narichukunti mani me ku teliyunu. First Thessalonians. First Thessalonians madhatpatrika. First Thessalonians, madhuti patrika.
Chapter four, verse one.
Nalugadhyemu, madhuti vachnam.
Furthermore, then we beseech you brethren, and exhort you by the Lord Jesus, that as ye have received of us, how ye ought to walk and to please God, so ye would abound more and more.
Mettukusahodarlara, meem prabhu neesu dhavarami, kichin agyannu meereerugudru, kaga, meereelagu nadchukoni, devu nee santosha parachvalano, ma valanu neetchukunina prakaramaga, meerunadchukunuchunnaaru, ee visham lo, meeraantakantaka, abritthu utnandavalanani, mimunu vedukoni, prabhu neesu nandu, hetcharinchichunnamu.
May our living and loving Savior bless the reading and meditation of his precious word unto all of us.
Manam chadine twanti vaakyabhagani, tamulyamane twanti yekka vaakyabhagani, manukoruk devinchii, mana dhanan devinchii, devinchilagana, mana jayungala satyadevu, aritika chenugaka.
When we come to the presence of the Lord, he speaks to us.
Manam prabhu yekka sanidukochinavudu, prabhu anta matlartad.
That is the burden of the Lord.
Adi prabhu yekka bharan.
But we should have also that similar burden.
Alanty bharan, manam kuda kaligundani.
When our one, his burden is matches with our burden, there we find the work of the Lord.
Aana bharanu, mana bharanu, kalisinappudu, prabhu yekka karani, manachodakalutam.
And when we hear the word of God, we should hear with attentive ears.
Devu nee kvaakyani vinetappudu, gamanika kaligunna twanti chavlotto vinal.
Lest we miss, we have to pay attention.
Mani eedana pogotkuntama, manna bhaivithoti, manna gamaninsan.
Then definitely, God will speak to us.
Prakachitanga, prabhu anta matlartad.
And any meeting that takes place under the sun.
Surinikinda jarige, ee kudikaina sare.
Should all prepare us for the coming of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Yesukrisupravuka, rakadkurukum, manandani siddaparchal.
Whether it be cottage meeting.
Adi groh kudike kaavichu.
Whether it is gospel meeting.
Suvartha kudike kaavichu.
And whether it is prayer meeting, or Bible study, or whatever meeting that takes place.
Pradhana kudike kaavichu, bailupattan kaavichu, lekka elati kudikaina sare.
Any retreats that you may have.
Any retreatal kaligunna sare.
Any youth camp that you may have.
Youth campal kaligunna.
Any meeting under the sun should prepare us for the coming of the Lord Jesus Christ, because that is the ultimate of the believer.
Pratikudikuda, surinikinda jarige, pratikudikuda, mana prabhu yekka rakadkurusiddaparchal, endikant, devu yekka visshosithol, tudakujarige, dadhe.
Lord is going to come again.
Prabhu tirigiranayunnaadu.
Very surely.
Kachitanga vastad.
When he would come again.
Aye, epadasadu.
According to Matthew's Gospel, chapter twenty-four, verse forty-four.
Matte suvartha, yiruvan nalugadhyemu, nalupen nalugavachnum prakarmu.
He will come when you are not even thinking that he would come.
Neev, meer anukonani gadiyela, enastad.
All of a sudden, he will come like a thief.
Akasmatika, dangavachinataastad.
We should not be caught unaware.
Mano ajagratika, un, unto patupadakud.
That is why we should be ever ready.
Antukoriki, yappadiki, manasiddhamundas.
I like ever ready batteries, ever ready batteries.
Ever ready battery, ani unto.
Do you know ever ready torch and ever ready battery?
Ever ready battery, ever ready torch, me tellchundu.
Whenever I see it, I reminded of the coming of the Lord.
Ya chusina, pala, yesupravaka rakadnak gurtostun.
We should be ever ready.
Mani yappadiki sudhulga undan.
Suddenly, you should not be caught.
Akasmatika, samshudhulga, lekka patupadak.
That is why we have to work out our salvation daily.
Antukoriki, anudinamu kuda, mane yekka rakshanun konasaginchukavai.
Before we go to bed.
Nedrapoga mundu.
Commit everything unto the Lord.
Pratiti, prabhu chetika apagincha.
Lord, this is day thou given me.
Prabha, ee rojina kichchavu.
And this is how I lived.
Neerakanga jivinchal.
This is how I behaved.
Neerakaga pradhinchan.
Then Lord will point out where you went wrong.
Appudu prabhu nu, ekkarta pujesavichu, pisat.
Then and there commit yourself unto the Lord.
Akkadakakade, prabhu ki samarpinch.
Lord will bless you.
Daud devu.
Lord will cleanse you, wash you.
Devu din kadugutadu shuddhikrista.
That is how the pruning should take place consistently, regularly.
Adi ritika, kramamena pathatlo, yedatekonda, katrimpanedi jarutu undan.
Do not take, get accumulated until the last day.
Prabhu achche roju varukku, mane papaalani kudas, pogijaskukud.
And many accumulate everything unto the watchnet service.
A chalaman nee jasan, ni anni kuda, watchnet service koruk pogijaskundu.
Every day, you have to prune yourself.
Pratiroju, manam, kathrinchukundu undan.
If you are willing, God can help you.
Neev, neev istapadthe, devu neek sahaipadthad.
That is how we should be ever ready for the coming of the Lord.
Adi ritika, yappadiki, neev, prabhu yekka rakadkurusiddhamundan.
That is why we should be ready always.
Antukoriki, epudu siddhamundan.
Are you prepared for that?
Darikoriki, nee siddamena?
Are you conscious of it?
Darikurichini, gamanika kaligundanava?
There is a true burden, two-fold burden of the church.
Sangamalo, rendintala bharan untundi.
Remind the congregation that the Lord Jesus Christ is going to come again.
Sangani ki, yesukrisupravu tirigostanadani, sangadni, teleja palkurtujayal.
Not that they are not aware of it.
Adi teleedu, valakani kaadu.
They know it.
Darilak tellsu.
They express it in their prayers, in their worship, in so many ways, they express it.
Val pradhanaluno, aradaluno, rakarakalaga, dan vekta parustar.
But we should be conscious of the coming of the Lord.
Kanee, prabhu astadani, gamanika manlo undan.
If you are conscious of the coming of the Lord, our behavior would be different.
Prabhu astadani, gamanika manlo unti, mana prabhathuna binlanga untundi.
Our consciousness of the coming of the Lord will prevent us in sinning.
Prabhu astadani, gamanika, mana paavunchakonda, aaptundi.
At any time, he will come.
Yeprenostadu.
I should be ready to be with the Lord.
Neenu elladani, siddhamundali.
So it is a bound and responsibility of the church to remind the congregation, again and again, that the Lord Jesus Christ is going to come again.
Kabatti sangamukivavadi netu, bharmentande, pratissari kuda, maatimati kuda, prabhu astunnadu, ane sangadni gurtujastundan.
And also tell the whole world, that is the second burden.
A, ee renda, a, prabancha mantak kuda, renda vishanichapal.
Entedi?
Entadi?
My Lord is going to come again.
Na prabhu tirigiranayunnaadu.
When we go for opener.
Bayrungusuarthal.
Normally, we end up with that verse in Acts, chapter sixteen, verse thirty-one.
A, aposelikarunnu padharothi, muppa, muppa, etu vachnum, etu mugistam.
Ah, believe in the Lord Jesus Christ, thou shalt be saved and thine household.
Prabhu neesu nandu visshosmucho, appudu neevunu, nee intu, aanu rakshinchapadataru mugistam.
That is very good.
Manchide?
But you go beyond that and say, my Lord is going to come again.
Kanee, darikant, minchima, chappasinanande, na prabhu tirigiranayunnaadu.
The one who gave himself on the cross.
Silo meeda, tanu tanapaginchukunna twanti.
The one who shed his precious blood for us.
Tanarakthani, manukoruk kaachinadu twanti.
The one who ascended into heaven.
Parlokan, arohanaadu twanti.
The one who seated on the right hand of God and is pleading for us.
Devu nee kvaadu paarshamnu, kuchinu, maanpachamnu, vignha parijas.
Say, Jesus is going to come again.
Adhe, yesupravu tirigiranayunnaadu.
Are you ready?
Neev siddhamundava?
Are you ready?
Neev siddhamundava?
A pertinent question.
Edi yedatekane twanti prashna.
Answer yourself.
Darik mana malame, jaavijapavai.
There is a man.
Okavektu nadu.
He is a very rich man, a believer, claims to be a believer.
Aana, chala manchi visshosan, anipogadpadavat.
Neen, manchi visshosavat. He claims that he is a believer.
Aana, visshosan jepi, anukuntan, ali, ali chappukuntad.
Ah, he behaves like that.
A visshosala pradhistan.
If somebody calls him.
Yavarenan piliste.
And phones him up. Phones him up.
Phone jeste.
How are you, sir?
Yalaunna sahodarant.
And he would say like this.
Ila antad.
I am waiting for the coming of the Lord.
Neen prabhu yekka rakadkuruk, kethuri justra antad.
Because, he does not believe that. His behavior, his conduct and character does not match with what he is saying.
Aana prabhathana, yekka gunalakshana, evi kuda, jinto pontan kaligundavai, chepeda antut.
Yeah, we have to be true to ourselves.
Mana gyalala, mana yadarthamundan.
If we are not true, you are deceiving others.
Okala, mana yedala, mana yadarthangal, lekka, italmoosparustan.
And thereby preventing instructions to you.
Neeku, upadeshamukundalu, aapchunav.
So somehow or another, we should get ready for the coming of the Lord.
Eedoka rakanga, prabhu yekka rakadkuruban, siddapadad.
Tell yourself.
Manam, manachepkavai.
My Lord is going to come again.
Na prabhu tirigiranayunnaadu.
And I should constantly make progress in my life, in my spiritual life.
Na atvi jutul, yedatekonda, munduk velutu undali.
Looking unto the Lord Jesus Christ, who is the author and the finisher of our faith, we should run the race that is set before us.
Mana visshosan, kartaayu konasaginchuvadani, yesu vaypu chuchu, mana yedutu, unchapadina, pande prangamlo, parikatali.
So our team is walk worthy of God.
Kaati mana, kamshamayantande, prabhu yekka taginattuganadavali.
Lord knows everything.
Prabhu kani thatsu.
He can see through and through.
Aana, neerigama, lawbalanchu chodakal.
Others may certify and comment that we are very godly people.
Idarlu chusi, ee lchala, daivikamane, valajepi, certify jayachil, lekka, kitabivachu.
Ah, very God fearing people.
Chala, devu nee bhaipadavari, jepad.
But what would God say, that matters much.
Kanee, devu nee japtanadu, manukurichu, adi, adi asalainam.
Lord can see through and through what you are.
Prabhu manalo, antarangant, antadu kuda, chodakaladu.
John's Gospel.
Yon suvartha.
Chapter two.
Rendadhyemu.
Verses twenty-four and twenty-five.
Yiruvai, nalugiruvaidu vachnal.
John's Gospel, chapter two, twenty-four and twenty-five.
Yon suvartha, rendadhyemu, yiruvan nalugiruvaidu vachnal.
But Jesus did not commit himself unto them, because he knew all men, and needed not that any should testify of man, for he knew what was in man.
Aite, esu andarin, eriginvadu, ganuka, aana tanuvari, vachnum cheskunaledu, aana manushini, antaramu, eriginvadu, ganuka, yavadnu, manushini kuchu, aanu ku sakshamiyana akkaraledu.
Many people think that you are alright.
Chalamu devu nekuntan, bhaagane unnaadu, ankuntad.
Ah, there is a bird called ostrich, a desert.
Nippukodi, nippukodi, anta ostrichani.
In the desert.
A, a, yedalal.
When the enemy chases it.
Danisatru, daniventa padnapudu.
It runs and runs.
Parikatudud, chala vekanga parikat.
And when it gets tired.
Adi alsimaynapudu.
When she thinks that he cannot, he cannot run anymore.
Ninkat, parikatta lena, naanankunappudu.
Puts its tiny head into the sand.
Dan talaka chinnakuntu, dan nee jasnandu, isklo dachpadu.
Ah, talan, ento chinnadi.
Talachinnadu, dan, nippukodi.
And then long neck.
Da poda, meradu, podavati, meradu.
And then puts its head with the eyes inside, into the sand.
A talanu, kalla todpatu, adi isklo, pettesantana.
And then she thinks that nobody is seeing me.
Appadad, evankundanande, yavarnan chodakle.
And now I am hidden.
Neen daakkunna.
And nobody can trace me.
Yavarguda, nanmuthkol.
What about that long neck?
Adi podavati, merasak.
What about those long legs?
Adi podavati, kaalasak.
What about that hefty body?
Adi padda, akarankal.
Everything is out.
Yanni baita kachisne.
Everything is available for the onslaught of the enemy.
A, chatru achchi, dan, mi dadjadan, kaniyandu vachal.
Many, many times, we, the believers of the Lord, so-called, we have that ostrich attitude.
Manam kuda, visshosame, chala, saali, nippukodi, kuna twanti, gunalakshana, kaligundan.
We think everything is okay.
Manam kuda, anni bhaagane unnaan.
That is the time you should be very careful.
A, a samuelon, chala jarad.
I do not know whether you have seen guriginja.
Gurivindikinja, at, bir chusarlena, teles.
Chusar?
Patnaal, guriginja chusar, patnal, chusundar.
Ah, villages lo, you will find that.
Evi, ya, gramalakal, itega.
Crimson red, very crimson red, very beautiful red color.
Rrr, rangu, pagadala, undundan.
Ah, guriginja, tanikendu, onna nalupu, tan, erakadata.
A ee gurivindikinja, kida, chinnan, nalati, matsa untundi, a, matsa sangadani, teleda.
So, there is a saying.
Da kaavat, okan, okan, naanundu.
Guring is a thing that is alright, very famous and very colorful.
Gurivindikinja, evankundan, chala, andangunna, chala, baugunna, rangu, rangu, gunna, ankuntam.
Underneath, there is blackness.
Da kida, nalupu rangundu.
So that is how many believers are living.
Aarak, chalamu, visshosal.
Do not take things for granted.
Ee vishanu, kuda, kakatalinga, tisku.
You should continue to walk in the ways of the Lord.
Prabhu yekka martholi, yedatekonda, nadustundan.
Looking unto the Lord Jesus Christ.
Yesu vaypu chuchuchu.
Because he is the author of our faith.
Endikant, amayne, visshosan, karta.
He is the preserver of our faith.
Ma danik konasaginchuvadu.
He is the finisher of our faith.
Danipurti jesevadu.
And he is the rewarder of our faith.
Aana, mana visshosan, ikhakkudadu.
That is how we should look unto him.
Aarak, kapan, ayan vaypu chudad.
And then Lord himself will enable us if we have desire.
Mana ki aasha unti, prabhu, danisafala parustad.
I said in the morning.
Odekalan chusamu.
Christian life is a life of progress.
Christa jivutamadi, munduk sagay jivutam.
We have to make constant progress in our spiritual life.
Mana atvi jutul, epudu, munduk velutune, undan.
That is a must situation.
Kachitanga chayalsnandu.
Otherwise, that means you have stopped growing in the Lord.
Lekka, pade, meer prabhu li, adagaram, mane.
There should be a vibration, you should be a vibrating believer.
Mana epudu, kadaleka, unnadu, unto, undan.
Not a very passive believer, passive and dull headed believer.
Ee, asal, utejalakundan, patthakankunna twanti, visshosundukud.
Sometimes when you meet a believer.
Ok, visshosan, epadan, kaliskunadukundu.
And you say with a lot of enthusiasm, Frisald brother.
Frisald brother, anta.
And then how he responds?
Ee ritika antaru, aal, elas pandistaru.
Frisald, nah.
Frisald, anna.
Ah, you know, as if something has, he has lost.
Eedo pogotkunodla, aga, antad.
That initial enthusiasm, initial fervor, that confidence, he has lost.
Aramul unna twanti, visshosam, aramul unna twanti, utejam, aramul unna twanti, a, a, visshosamani, edi, pogotkunadu.
Yeah, that is why Paul writes again and again, I am reminded of that verse in Philippi two twelve, work out your salvation in fear and trembling.
Adi kari, Philipas, patrika, rendadhyemu, panindu vachn, rai padan, maata, mee visshosamun, bhaivitho, unukuto, konasaginchukunade, konasaginchukunadi, aana maata, maatimati, gurtostun.
In the portion that we have read in first Thessalonians, chapter four.
Uputu Thessalonians, madhuti patrika, nalugadhyemu, chadukunna twanti, bagamalo.
We should abound more and more.
Meer antakantaku, antakantuka, abritthu utnandavalanani.
How you ought to walk and to please God, so you would abound more and more.
Meer elagu nadchukoni, devu nee santosha parachvalano, ma valanu, neetchukunina, prakarami, meerunadchukunuchunnaaru, ee visham lo, meer antakantaku, abritthu utnandavalanani.
As you walk with God.
Devu ta nadchitappudu.
Then how can you walk with God?
Devu ta elan nadustam.
Amos, chapter four, verse three says.
Amos, krandam, nalugadhyemu, dodachun.
Unless you agree together, how can you walk?
Idar sammatinchakpode, kalisi elan nadustar.
Then how can you be a walking believer with the Lord Jesus Christ, unless you agree with what he has said, and unless you do what he had told you to do?
Prabhu cheppidani, man chayukpote, aan cheppidani, sammatinchakpote, idram, prabhu tothi, kalisi elan nadukalutam.
Here there is a word, unless you ought to walk and to please God.
Ikkada rai padan, maatantande, meer elagu nadchukoni, devu nee santosha parachvalano.
And in Hebrew, chapter eleven, verse six says.
Hebrewas, patrika, padukundu, aarlo undi.
Without faith, it is impossible to please God.
Visshosamulekunda, devu nee kishudhadi, asadyamu.
So that is where it begins.
Akkad praramautun.
Our Christian life began when we had faith in Christ.
Mana Christa jivutam, epad, yesupravu, visshosan, kaligunnaava, praramay.
We should remember our origin.
Mana ekarapana, man gurtubetkavai.
Romans, chapter ten, verse seventeen.
Romans, patrika, padavadhyemu, padedavachnum.
Romans, chapter ten, verse seventeen.
Romans, patrika, padavadhyemu, padedavachnum.
Faith comes by hearing, and hearing by the word of God.
Vinutavalam, visshosam kaligunnu, visshosam, devu nee vaakyavala kaligunnu.
That is how the faith was inculcated by the power of the Holy Spirit, in our hearts.
Aadi ritika, parishuddhavam, yekka shaktijeta, visshosamani, man hoodiyamla, pempodimpajabartun.
When we heard the word of God.
Man devu nee vaakyani vinappudu. We have not seen him. But yet we believe on him. That is what Paul writes in first Peter chapter one verse eight. First Peter. Chapter one. Verse eight. Very famous verse. Whom having not seen, ye love in whom, though now ye see him not yet believing, ye rejoice with joy unspeakable and full of glory. Though we have not seen him, yet we love him. Though we have not seen him, yet we believed on him. That is how we are initiated into the truth concerning the Lord Jesus Christ. We believed on him. That is what word of God says. God so loved the world that whose ever believed on him should not perish but have everlasting life. Oh that is a famous verse. Hundreds and thousands of people were saved by that watch. God so loved the world. But who can appropriate that love? How can you appropriate and enjoy and express that love? It is only by believing on him. You have not seen him. You only heard of him. And yet believing. The entire Christianity rests on the pivotal point of faith. No faith, entire Christianity will fall down. I believe Lord has forgiven me. I believe I had the assurance of sins forgiven. I believe he had removed them as far as Egypt is from the west. I believe he also said I will remember them no more. That is how I have become a Christian. A follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. So that is how our faith was inculcated, initiated in the beginning, though we have not seen him, just merely we heard of him. Vissvassam, this faith is a very important ingredient of Christian life. That is why Lord Jesus Christ said. In Matthew's Gospel. Chapter eleven. Verse twenty-two. And Jesus answering Satan to them, have faith in God. Eleven twenty-two. The Mark's Gospel, Mark's Gospel eleven twenty-two. Eleven twenty-two. Have faith in God. That is a must situation. That is not a suggestion. That is not an optional thing. It is a must situation. Have faith in God. You will have faith in God. You will have that joy unspeakable and full of glory when your sins are forgiven. Faith is very, very important. If there is no faith. There can't be any prayer. If there is no faith. There cannot be any praise and worship. If there is no faith. You cannot have any fruitful fellowship. If there is no faith. You cannot enjoy the unlimited power of God. If we have no faith. There can't be any obedience. You understand that? How did the first parents disobey? When Saturn came and tempted him. The first mistake she did was. She did not say, wait, I will call my husband. Or else she did not say, you know, my husband is away, please come after he comes. She took upon herself. Humbeek which hey. Ah then element of slight fright was there. She started handling that situation, it is a very tough situation. And then, Lord said, Saturn said. You will not surely die. Lord said. With the moment you eat, you will surely die. Saturn said. You shall not surely die. That is how Saturn showed the seed of doubt. And what did Eve do? Eve disbelieved God's truth and believed devil's lie. So that is how, because of that lack of initial faith. She fell to the temptation of Saturn and ate that forbidden fruit. We highlight more disobedience, disobedience, disobedience. But how did that come? It is because of lack of faith. It is because of the lack of faith, Eve disobeyed God's word. So we can say it is because of lack of faith, she entered into the world. So faith is very, very important. If you lose faith, you have lost everything. If there is no faith, there cannot be any effect to preaching. If there is no faith, there can't be edification in the church. If there is no faith, there cannot be a separation from the world. No faith, no heaven. Remember this. You should continue to have faith in him. It began with the hearing of the word of God. Then what we read in Romans ten seventeen. In order to continue in that faith. We should continue in the world. Because it was through the word of God we have faith. And in order to be established and continue in faith, we should continue in the word of God. When you are not even reading the word of God, how can you continue in the world? John's Gospel. Chapter eight verse thirty-one. John's Gospel eight thirty-one. Lord said these words. If he continue in my word, then are ye my disciples. Ah we should continue in the word of God. When Peter gave the word. Around three thousand souls were saved. Ah that is what we read in Acts of the Apostle, chapter two. And then we find verse forty-two. They, they continued. Those who were saved, they continued steadfastly in apostles doctrine, fellowship, breaking of bread and in prayer. Then how they inculcated faith more and more. These are the four spiritual exercises one must go through always. Continue all devotion to the word of God. Continue all devotion to the fellowship. Continue all devotion to the table of the Lord. Continue all devotion to the prayer line. Devotion means. Do what the word of God says. Following the word of God. Strictly following the word of God. Word of God says like this. So I live like this. Word of God says like this. So I live like this. That is the practical Christian life that you must have. So faith is very, very important. If there is no faith, there can't be any Christian virtues at all. Everything based on faith. Faith is the foundation on which every Christian trait is built up. Second Peter chapter one. What says five to nine makes it very, very clear. Listen to it, brother, read. Motheradhyaymu, ayidunchi tomiduvaru. Ee ah edu cheta, mi matu kumiru, purna jagatakala varaai, mi vissvassamunandu, satgunamunu, satgunamunandu, jnannamu, jnannamu andu, aashanikramu, aashanikramu andu, sahanamu, sahanamu andu, bhaktiini, bhakti andu, sawadarpramamu, sawadarpramayandu, dayanu, amarchukunadi. Evi meku kaligi vistaranachala, avi mana prabhaani esu krishnu gurichana, anubhav jnana visyamulo, mimuno, somarlane nu, nishvalane nu, kaakuntachem, evi yavani, yavani ki lakapunu, varutana pura papamulagu shuddhi kaligina, sangati marichipoi, guruti varaai nu, duradrisi len varaai nu. You understand that? It is a very serious portion concerning faith. In the fifth verse it says. To faith add virtue. And then virtue, knowledge. So like that, first basis is the faith. If there is no faith, all the Christian other virtues will not be there. Foundation is faith. That is why we would like to inculcate in your heart to trust him, depend upon him more and more. No faith, no value. There was a mathematics teacher. Teaching the children. One and one zero is ten. One and two zeros is hundred. One and four zeros is ten thousand. And one, one and five zeros is one lakh. After that, immediately headmaster sent a word and he called him. And then headmaster, the teacher said, I will just come again. He went to the headmaster. And in the class, there is always some nut cut. Ah all are old. Took the duster. And wiped out one before one lakh. Then teacher comes after some time. Then he turned to the blackboard. And one and five zero and one less. Then what happens? Do the five zeros have any value? There is no value. That one is faith. Faith is very, very important ingredient in Christian life. It is not, it is not something that people who have come for whole time serving the Lord should practice it. Whoever is purchased by the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ. Should live by faith. Second Corinthians. We walk by faith, not by sight. That is the ideal situation of Christian life. If you have faith in God. What you think it is impossible will become possible in front of you. See, Mark's Gospel. Mark's Gospel. Chapter ten. Verse twenty-seven. And Jesus looking upon them saying, with men it is impossible, but God, but not with God, for with God all things are possible. For God all things are possible. Note that for God all things are possible. Now you read chapter nine verse twenty-three. Mark's Gospel nine twenty-three. All things are possible to him that believed. So here he is equated to the very God. For God all things are possible. Now he says. But there is a clause, there is a condition. If we can believe. All things are possible to you. Oh what a check Lord has given to us, signed. We have to encash it. Provided you trust him. Provided you trust him. Then wonderful things will happen. Great men of God. Exercise their faith. Their list we have in Hebrew chapter eleven. Really, if you read it practically, you will lu pulakaristu. How the men of God in the whole times, how they exercise faith at the very risk of their lives? How could David, a tiny boy, could kill just very gigantic personality like Goliath? He killed him. That is the power of faith. That is why we should inculcate that faith more and more. While writing to Timothy. First Timothy. Chapter five. Verse twelve. First Timothy, chapter five, verse twelve. Having domination because they have cast off their first faith. They have cast off their first faith. It is said concerning the believers. Who are with Timothy. And Timothy was a wonderful servant of God. Who have such people like that. Those who, then such people who are there with him. Those initially they had faith. But they have cast off their first faith. What do we read in Revelation, chapter two verse four? They have left their first love. Ah that first heat of love is gone. Ah now we have come a normal people. Now they have left, left the faith. And they have left the love. Now what happened? They have lost their works also, first work. That is what we read in Revelation, chapter two verse five. That is why if faith is gone, everything is gone. There is a saying. If money is lost, nothing is lost. If health is lost, something is lost. And if character is lost, everything is lost. That is faith. If we have lost faith, you have lost everything. That is why you should continue in faith. Acts of Apostles. Chapter fourteen. Here we find the burden of the apostles. Who are exhorting the believers. What did they do? Acts, chapter fourteen, verse twenty-two. Confirming the souls of the disciples and exhorting them to continue in faith and that we must through much tribulation enter into the kingdom of God. We should continue in faith. And thus, the funny first thing is, we should increase, abound more and more in faith. If you want to walk worthy of God. If you walk, want to walk in the worthy of the Lord Jesus Christ. You should continue in faith. Ah it is only then you can please him and glorify him. So there are many things like this. How can you continue in faith? We have read that John's Gospel eight thirty-one. You should continue in his word. It is only when you continue in his word, you can continue in that faith. We have to read and meditate the word of God. We keep pondering upon the word of God. There is some faculty God has given us in our brain. I believe there is a compartment. Where you can, I can be here with you now and in a just twinkling of a second, I can go to with my children and come back, yes or no? That is the quality, quality God has given to us. But what I am saying is. Use that wonderful quality for the meditating in the word of God. That is what I do. I may be talking to people. People may be meeting me. Maybe I will be praying for them. But meditation is going on in that compartment. He will not commit any mistake. Even while cooking. While reading the word of God. Or while working in your office. As you are driving the car. Keep thinking about the word. That is how they continued in the word of God in the beginning. There was obsession, obsession for the word. I had that pitchy. Earlier, I had pitchy for football. I used to kick the stones on the road also. Because we did not have money to purchase a football. My mother would not give me any money. I used to take my mother's old sarees. Yeah, so that is how I was obsessed about the football. So afterwards, when I was born again. At the age of thirteen. They have that obsession for the word of God. I never heard before like this. But just when he was giving the word, it will be like in a summer, you do jalakal, ardam, tammarlo, oka koronlo jalakal, anta baguntan, anta bagundan. Yes, the angel girl, I know, what man is it, eh, enda, mandu, tenda, samayu lo, manchis, salat, niel, konal lo, yeta, god, unti, ala, untu, da, ala, untu. So we were obsessed with the word of God. He told me. Jaya, you may not be knowing the wonderful truths in the Bible now at this age. But you read the word of God. Thereby you are respecting the word of God. Even if you don't understand, doesn't matter. You keep on reading. God in his own time, he will reveal. And I obeyed him. And it has become true in my life. Step by step, little by little, God has been revealing to me. That is what would happen. You get obsessed with the word of God. Then God will do wonderful things in your life. He will not go wrong. If any calamity strikes you. It is the word of God will keep you in good stead. You know, the word of God, the power of the word of God will keep you in good stead in times of calamity, calamitous situations.
They have done so.
When my wife was called to glory suddenly in a train accident.
A train accident, a car crash.
The word of God strengthened us.
They have done so.
Oh, there was power in the word of God.
They have done so.
And wonderful things have happened in our family.
You are going to do it.
There is a wonderful example.
You are going to do it.
In Jeremiah chapter twenty verse nine.
When he was put into the jail.
And he was cursing himself. Why did I live? Why was I born? Why was I born? Why was I dead at the time of birth?
You are going to do it.
Oh, that is how he was cursing himself.
You are going to do it.
Read twenty verse nine.
Look into the word of God, please.
Jeremiah chapter twenty verse nine.
Jeremiah, when he was born.
Jeremiah, when he was born. Jeremiah twenty verse nine.
Jeremiah, when he was born. His name is. His name is. He is. He is. He is.
See, the word of God was shut up in my bones like a burning fire, he says.
When he is.
That is what has happened to us and my children.
You are going to do it.
We were strengthened by the word of God.
They have done so.
No human words, no human comfort could have comforted us.
We are faithful.
It is the word of God that strengthens us.
They have done so.
And that word will come out of faith only.
They have done so.
When you have faith, you will have the word of God.
They have done so.
And then in a wonderful way, God will lead you on and on in the midst of any calamitous situations that you may confront in your life.
We are going to do it.
So what we are seeing is.
You are going to do it.
Who is in increase, we should abound more and more in faith.
We are going to do it.
Roman chapter one.
Romans, in Romans, the verse seventeen.
Romans, chapter one, verse seventeen.
Romans, in Romans, the verse seventeen.
Ah, it is.
Why? You are going to do it. We are going to do it. We are going to do it.
We are going to do it.
We are going to do it.
From faith to faith.
We are going to do it.
When you believe on the Lord.
Yes, we are going to do it.
That is the initial faith.
That is our faith.
But by initial faith, you are made his.
You are going to do it.
By continual faith, you are kept his.
You are going to do it.
That is a wonderful truth.
This is a wonderful thing.
Well translated. By initial faith, you are made his; by continual faith, you are kept his.
You are going to do it. You are going to do it.
Oh, that is a wonderful thing.
You are going to do it.
It is only then, when he would come again, you will be ready for the coming of God.
You are going to do it.
That is why Paul was obsessed about the faith.
You are going to do it.
He wrote the second Corinthians.
Corinthians, verse twenty three.
Chapter thirteen, verse five.
The verse twenty three. Corinthians, verse twenty three.
Hey, sorry.
The verse twenty three.
Ah, what, what does it say?
You are going to do it.
I examine yourselves whether you are in faith.
You are going to do it.
Now, horrible and believers.
You are going to do it.
Ah, think about it.
You are going to do it.
Do you have that faith?
You are going to do it.
If you have that faith, is that faith multiplying?
You are going to do it.
Or the faith is dwindling down and down.
You are going to do it.
It is the faith on which all the other Christian traits, Christian characteristics will build up.
This is our faith.
So that is why word of God says, from faith to faith, you should abound more and more.
You are going to do it.
There is a famous line in Luke's Gospel, chapter eighteen, verse eight.
Luke's Gospel, the verse twenty three.
The last portion of that verse.
In the latter part.
Nevertheless, when the son of man commits, shall he find faith on the earth?
He is going to do it.
Will he find the earth?
He will not see how nicely you are preaching. You are going to do it.
He will not see how nicely you are singing.
You are going to do it.
How nicely you are sacrificing everything for the cause of Christ.
You are going to do it.
How skillfully you are playing various instruments.
You are going to do it.
All these things he is not going to see.
You are going to do it.
But whether you are in faith or not.
You are going to do it.
That is very important.
You are going to do it.
No, examine yourselves.
You are going to do it.
Whether you are in faith.
You are going to do it.
Do you have that faith? Do you have that faith that you had initially?
You are going to do it.
Ah, you have left everything.
You are going to do it.
All worldly things.
You are going to do it.
Total turnaround happened in your life.
You are going to do it.
Now, slowly and steadily.
You are going to do it.
Don't you think that you are going into the world?
You are going to do it.
Sleeping steadily.
You are going to do it.
You will give little room to the Satan.
You are going to do it.
Occupy you, occupy your life.
You are going to do it.
In our, in our pre-university.
Pre-university.
We have a lesson.
A lot of stories in English, one of the lesson is Arab and camel. In English, there are a lot of stories. There are stories, an Arab, a wolf. There are stories.
Arabian night stories.
Arabian nights.
It is a fiction.
That is a fairy tale.
But I draw a wonderful moral for our own Christian life.
We are going to do it.
There was an Arab.
An Arab.
Sitting on his camel and traveling.
He is going to do it.
At an oyasu, she is in the evening.
He is going to do it.
He haws there.
He is going to do it.
Puts his tiny tent.
A little.
And ties up the camel outside and he slept inside the tent.
He is going to do it.
That was winter night.
That is a cold night.
And then there is a conversation, the story goes like this.
You are going to do it.
And the camel tells the moss, the Arab.
He is going to do it.
Sir, I have carried you all the way.
You are going to do it.
I am very much tired.
You are going to do it.
And it is winter night.
You are going to do it.
My head is shivering.
You are going to do it.
My head is shivering. Could you please allow my head to put in inside the tent?
You are going to do it.
Then he said, okay, put in, put your head.
You are going to do it.
Then after some time.
You are going to do it.
You know I have a long neck.
You are going to do it.
I am feeling very chill, very cold.
You are going to do it.
Could you please allow me to put my neck?
You are going to do it.
Then that man says, okay, put your neck.
You are going to do it.
And then afterwards, he, afterwards, he asks.
You are going to do it.
My four legs are, you know, I am feeling very tired, very cold.
You are going to do it.
Four legs. Four legs, F O R E.
Ah, four legs. Four legs.
Why don't you help me?
You are going to do it.
Then he adjusted himself within the tent and then allowed the camel's four legs to come inside.
He is going to do it. He is going to do it.
Then further conversation.
You are going to do it.
Camel will not leave.
He is going to do it.
Camel says.
He is going to do it.
Sir, I have to take you again.
You are going to do it.
I have to carry you a long way.
You are going to do it.
My stomach is very paining because of the weather. Allow me to put my stomach also inside.
You are going to do it.
Then he said, please come in.
You are going to do it.
He adjusted himself further.
You are going to do it.
Then final section, final.
You are going to do it.
Final assault.
You are going to do it.
He said, my hind legs are also chivering.
You are going to do it.
Sir, why don't you be gracious unto me?
You are going to do it.
Allow me to put my hind legs also.
You are going to do it.
Then he said, yes, come in.
You are going to do it.
By the time it was dawn.
You are going to do it.
By the time it was dawn in the morning.
You are going to do it.
Camel was inside the tent and the Arab is outside the tent.
He is going to do it.
This is what Satan will do.
He is going to do it.
Little room he gave.
You are going to do it.
Little yielding to some temptation.
You are going to do it.
Satan will occupy you and destroy your life.
He is going to do it.
That is why you live a life of separation unto him.
You are going to do it.
Power of God is linked with separation.
This is our faith.
That is only then you will have continued faith.
You are going to do it.
Then God can do wonders and miracles.
You are going to do it.
Have faith in God.
You are going to do it.
If you read that list of the heroes of faith.
You are going to do it.
What did they do?
You are going to do it.
By faith, Abel brought an offering that was acceptable unto the Lord.
You are going to do it.
Ah, and then Hanaud walked with God by having faith.
You are going to do it.
He pleased God.
He is satisfied.
And he was not because God took him.
He is going to do it.
And concerning Noah, it is said.
Noah.
It is a wonderful verse, Hebrews chapter eleven, verse seven.
Hebrews, the verse twenty three.
By faith, having, being warned of God of things not seen as yet. Prepared and hard for the saving of his house by which he condemned the world and became heir of righteousness.
You are going to do it. You are going to do it. You are going to do it.
That speaks of his righteousness.
You are going to do it.
And also, it talks about the burden for his family.
You are going to do it.
Nobody cooperated with him.
You are going to do it.
Single-handedly, he started making the ark.
You are going to do it.
According to the design given to him by God.
You are going to do it.
He was not to do according to his innocent fancy.
You are going to do it.
According to God's pattern.
You are going to do it.
We read Genesis chapter six, verse twenty two.
You are going to do it.
According to the design, whatever God has told him, he fulfilled it.
You are going to do it.
That is how he was invited in the ark of Noah.
You are going to do it.
So by faith, he accomplished the great task.
You are going to do it.
And on Mount Ararat, the, the work of Noah rested.
You are going to do it.
New life emerged out of Noah's ark.
You are going to do it.
New life emerged.
You are going to do it.
That is how he was instrumental by faith.
You are going to do it.
So like that, we find concerning Abraham.
You are going to do it.
Eleven twenty, eleven and verse eight says.
You are going to do it.
Not going where he, where he was going, he left the place.
You are going to do it.
And same thing we find concerning Moses.
You are going to do it.
He did not care for the palatial comforts.
You are going to do it.
He took a decision to do with his people.
You are going to do it.
By faith, he sacrificed everything.
You are going to do it.
And eleven thirty is a wonderful verse.
You are going to do it.
Walls of, in English it says, by faith walls of Jericho fell down.
You are going to do it.
Do you believe?
You are going to do it.
Do you believe?
You are going to do it.
Ah, very good. You should believe every miracle that has taken place in the word of God.
You are going to do it.
Then when you believe it.
You are going to do it.
Then when you come across some hurdles, you will also do the same thing.
You are going to do it.
There was Sunday school.
Sunday school.
At the British time.
British time.
They have appointed teachers.
Teachers.
Sunday school teachers, paid teachers. Paid teachers.
You are going to do it.
And there was inspectors of Sunday schools also.
Sunday school inspectors. Sunday school inspectors वालु गुड़
In one such occasion, inspectors of school, Sunday school, she came to a Sunday school
वक्सर ओके inspector, who Sunday school नी परावेक्षण जरागोचिन
And then she told the teacher
Teacher तो एपिन
Ma'am, you sit for a while, I would like to ask some questions
अम्मलु कुन्से कुचो नी कुनी प्रश्न अड्डतन पिल्लान
And then this inspector of school, she asked one question
ये inspector अच्छिनामा कुनी प्रश्न अडिं
Why tell me who destroyed the walls of Jericho?
आई बाबु नुचिना नुचपुनाना एरिको गोडल कुलचिन देवर
That fellow did not answer
वाड़ की जव्हले
And then he asked another boy
इनको पिल्ला वाड नडिं
He got up and started crying
वाड़ लेस दिन बड़ा नड़ो मधल वेट
She could not understand why that boy has to cry
एंदुके एडस्त नड़ो अर्थंगाल
And she asked another girl
इनको कम्मा नडिं
And she cried aloud
आम इनका कटिगेड
And said, not me
नेन गाद
नेनु गादन जपिन दा पिल्ला
नेन गादन जपिन दा पिल्ला
She got fabricated this teacher, this inspector of schools
आश्चर्य कलिं दे एंड दी विस्मा मोंडी
Hey, what is this happening here?
एंड एंड अम्मनी अडिक
Then she looked at the teacher
अबड़ टीचर आयुजिसन
And how, hey, what is happening here?
एंड एंजर्ड दिकान जप टीचर आयुजिसन
And teacher, निन्न ता
Teacher अन्न ता
Teacher, my children are very sincere, they will not do such things
Inspector यारु ना पिल्लाल चाला मंचलीलान पल जेर
Supervision knowledge
पाई पाई उंडे अटुनी मिडिमिडिक ज्ञान
Paid knowledge
डब्बु जदोचे ज्ञान
They do not have the power of God to understand these things
देवने का शक्ति वालल लेदी वर्तन जस
We have loved all right
अब मान नव्यम बाने उंडी
How about our faith?
मान विश्वासम विषम
Do you have that faith?
आ विश्वासम मीकुंदा
I often think
प्रत्साह चाला
As they are walking around seven days, seven times
ये दिनमल ये दिसालु तिरिगिन
Six days, six times
आर दिनालु रोजको अक्सार
And seven days, seven times
ये दो रोज ने ये दिसालु तिरिय
I wonder sometimes if our believer, one of our believers is there in that group
ओका वेला ये रकंगा उइंचकुंटान एंड एंडे मान विश्वासल ओका विश्वासी आ गुंपल उंड
आये एम जयस वाड
ए जयस वाड
So, seventh day, they are taking one round
ये दो रोज ने ओका प्रदेशन जस्ते
Second round
रेंडो प्रदेशन
Three, third round
मुड़सारी
Fourth round
नालुक प्रदेश
Fifth round
आयदसार
八十 and seven rounds
इप्रव अन्नाड़ ये दिसालु अन्न
Now seven is coming close
इपुड़ ये दो प्रदेशन
Then I tend to think like this
अप्रीरित काका
This Indian believer will touch the wall and see whether it is becoming, you know
आया अबड़ बारदी विश्वासी उंटी आ गुंपलो गौरन बट्टी आसली मेत्तक
मेत्तक
मेत्तक आउट उंडा जूसी वाड
But children of Israel had such faith
कर इजर्व प्रजल कलांत विश्वास
Solid faith
कट्टी विश्व
Another interesting truth is
दात आसक्तिकर्मने सच
Until the rule of Moses, they were murmurers and grumblers
मोश्य ओका नायकत्तोल वाले पुर सनी वालुगा गुनी वालुगा उंडे
But under the leadership of Joshua, they were transformed people
योश्वा कालम कोचे सरकी योश्वा नायकत्तोल वालु मार्पचेन
You know why?
एंदुक देस
When Moses died, they mourned for the death of Moses thirty days
एंदे मोश्य चनिपन अड़ु मोश्य ओकुरकु मुपयो दिनाल एंच
When they mourned for the death of Moses, they also would have confessed their rebellious attitude towards him
मोश्य गुरिंच विलपिंच अटपुडु वालु आने एडल चुपिंच अटुनी तिरुबाड सोबाव गुरिंच वालु पछाता
Ah, a lot of times it happens
चाला साली जरुतु
Even a son is a rebel at home
इंटलो कुमार तिरुबाड
He is a great problem at home
इंटल समस्या सुष्ट
When father dies
तंडी जनिपन
At that time, he will get convicted
अप्पड़ा संगल वाड ओपित
And he will bitterly cry, oh, I did not listen to my father
एच आयो ना तंडी माट इनले
So I have every reason to believe, when Moses was dead, when the children of Israel mourned for his death, they also would have confessed their follies in front of God
कार्टी नी नम्म कट्टीका नम्मडाने का आधार में एंडे मोश्य चनिपन अपुडु आन विलपिंच अटपुडु आन कुरकु विलपिंच अटपुडु आन एडल वार चेसन अटुनी अन्नी गुत्ती देचुकुनी वाड़ विषमे पछाता
That is why they are transformed people
अंदुकरके मार्पचेन दिरवा
Now they are not asking him any questions
इपुड़ इनका योश्वा नी एलांती प्रश्न अडक
River Jordan is fully, fully flowing onto the brink of the banks
योरदान नदी अंचल मट्टुकु पोडली पार्त
And Joshua is not telling anything
योश्वा एन चपटले
Prepare boats
बोट नावल सिद्ध
Bring some wooden logs
एलाते चक्कल दीसक
Nothing he is saying
ए या पटले
So they never asked
कवट अडगले
They never questioned
वाड़ प्रश्न चले
He said, when the feet of the priest carrying the ark of the covenant touches the water, water will flow that stopped, it will be stopping
आइता अन्नाड़ एप्रे ते मंदसान नी मोसेटी याजुकलेका कालु नीटिन तगुलतायो इदि विभजिंच बरतुंडी नील एकड़क एकड़ा आयुपोताय मिके दार यार पड़तन जपड
The flow stopped
आकड़ प्रवाहम आगिपे
And the flow stopped, it was like a heap
ये आप्रवाह आगिपे नुड़ोका कुप्पका मारी
Water is coming from above
पाईनिच नील पार्तनाई
And when water is coming up
पाईनिच नील पाले
And it is becoming a heap
आधि कुप्पका पोकाव
And humanly speaking, it is unbelievable to think that how could water always goes into the low-lying areas could stop like a heap before them
इदि मानव रैतिका मान आलोचिस्ते इदि आसाध्य मन्तिस एंदुकन्डे एपुड़ पल्लानी वेदुकुंटी पोये नीलु इपुड़ एम अटन्डे दाव ओका दानपन वोट अत्ला कुप्पकिंदे यार पड़तन
That is the greatest manifestation of the power of God
देवने का शक्ति ये अद्भुतंगा प्रदेश
Children of Israel never doubted that
Israels प्रजल दान अनुमान
They were trained already at the river Jordan
योरदान नदी कोचे सरकी वालु मार्पों
And they were, they crossed the river Jordan
वाल योरदान नदी दाट
That gave them lot of strength
वाले गेन्तो बालान इचिन
And they believed, Joseph, Joshua
योश्वा नी वाल नम्म
Ah, whatever he said, they
एत्याद चेस
That is how, by faith, walls of Jericho fell down
आरकंगा विश्वासन नुबट्टी एरिको गोडल कुल
The lesson for us is
मान गोचे मान देल्स कुन पाट
We should abound more and more in faith
विश्वासम लो अंतकंत कुमन एक्को
The faith that we have now is not sufficient
ये रोज मन कुन्ना विश्वासम सरिपन विश्वास
For God to work on our behalf
मान पक्षंगा देवड़ पंजे
First day, I read one verse
मोदे रोज नाव कोचन
On the day of dedication
प्रतिष्ठ दिनमन
Matthew's Gospel
मत्तेस्वर्ता
Chapter thirteen
पदमुद्ध दियम
Verse fifty-eight
यावे इनुद वचन
Matthew's Gospel, thirteen, verse fifty-eight
मत्तेस्वर्ता पदमुद्ध दियम यावे इनुद
And he did not many mighty works there because of their unbelief
वार अविश्वासम नुबट्टी आन आकड़ अनेकमन अद्भुतमुल चेयले
He wanted to do much more than what he has already done
इपुड़ के एसन अटुनी काजलकंटिंग एक्कुगा चेलन अनुकुन
But he is not able to do it
कान्तन चेल
Because they are unbelieved, they are like a stumbling block
वार अविश्वासम अट्टु अट्टुगा नेल
Same thing happens to us
मानकु दे जरुतु
The power of God is not able to flow in our lives
देवने का शक्ति मान जीवताल प्रावेश
Because of unbelief
मान अविश्वासन इबट्टी
When we have trust in him
आन नु विश्वासम उंच
Unbelievable things happen
नम्मले एने अटुनी विषम जरुत
Brother Baxing was a great example for us
सर बक्सिंग यारु गोप्पा माद्र
He was a great challenge for us
मान गोप्पा सवाल मन
His life was dotted with faith and prayer
आनेक विश्व जीवतामत ओका विश्वासम प्रादन कलिं
As Abraham's life was dotted with tent and faith
ये रकंगाइते अब्राहम ओके जीवताम गुडारम
Tent and altar, tent and altar
गुडारम बलिफीटम ये रकंग उंडीन आवे वाडिक आन जीवतान गुरु
He had faith and prayer
आरकंगा विश्वासम प्रादन कलिं
He was very close, he very easily get connected to heaven
चाला सुनायसंग देवन तोटी सम्मान कल्पेट
Before you pray, before you pray
आन प्रादन चक मुन
You should, before you pray
मेर प्रादन चेक
You should make sure that you get connected to heaven
परलकंतोट अनुसंधान मौतुनार ले चूस
Ah, that is very important
चाला प्राम
How do you can do that?
ये रकंगा चेग
Confess your faults
नी तप्पीदाल नुप्प
Make things straight with God
देवन तोटी संगत सरिज
Come onto the ground of righteousness
नी तने बलम मेदा क्राव
It is only then, it is only then God can hear you
अप्पड़ मात्र में देवड़ विंट
Brother Baxing was always on the ground of righteousness
बक्सिंग यार एपुड़ कुड़ा नीती मेदा नेल
He believed him
आन नु विश्वासम
He trusted him
आन नु नम्म कम्बिट
Total trust on him
सम्पूर्ण मन विश्वास
When he was in Bombay
बम्बे लो नप
When his parents left him and went away
तन तलिकंडल आन ओदिलपेट वेलिप
Then he was on his own
आन इक्का तनंदरतन
Whatever tracks he had, he had been distributing and somehow was surviving
आन देगुन करपत्रिकल पंच आन ये रकंगा कोनसागु
Monday, he was very hungry
ओकर चाला आकल
I heard this from the mouth of Brother Baxing many times
सर बक्सिंग यार नोट लो ये माटल विन
When he was very hungry
आन चाला आकल
He tells his friend in a bow
पाईनिच नटे ने स्नेह दिये
यवरान Lord, he tells him
देवड़ ये
Lord, I am hungry
प्रवाह ना काकल
Then the Lord told him
अबड़ प्रवाह अन्नाड
Hey, go, सरी कुचो Go, go to that restaurant
आ पलान रेस्टोरेंट केल
Ah, Brother Baxing said
बक्सिंग यार अन्नाड
Lord, I don't have money
प्रवाह दाकड़ केल दिनांग डब्बु ले
But Lord said, I am telling you, go to that restaurant
प्रवाह नड़ नी चप्तन अन्न कदन आकड़ केल
He goes there
आकड़ गेल
You need guts to go to a restaurant to eat without money
डब्बु लेकड़ जेबल डब्बु लेकुंडा ओका रेस्टोरेंट के होटल केली तिनाली एंडे देरी
In Karmul, in our college
कर्नल लो काल
If any of our friends say, let us have masala dosa in the hotel
ये ले होटल केली मसाला
Then we have to inquire, how much you have?
अप्पड़ लेकवे इसकु नीदे रेतुंड
How much I have?
नादेगु रेतुंड
Then we check up all our
अंदर देगु रेतुंड पोग
Ah, yeah, now it is sufficient, let us go
आयपुड़ सरिम
We make sure that we have sufficient money
सरिका डब्बु नायल सरिपटिंग डब्बु
लाद वाड़ काल यार कोड
लाद वाड़ काल यार कोड
So we make sure that we have money
डब्बु नायल निर्धारण जस
Look at Brother Baxing
बक्सिंग यार
You ask him to go to the restaurant, he goes
पलान रेस्टोरेंट केल एंडे एल
He sat in the chair near the table
टेबल देवर कुचन
And then waiter comes and gives the menu card
अबड़ वेटर अच्छी मेनू कार्ड इस्त
He looks at it
दान जूस
Then again he prays unto the Lord
प्रभु तो
Lord, I don't have money
प्रवाह नाड़ डब्बु ले
He said, order what you want
देवड़ अंड
In a while
निक नच
That is how, Brother Baxing was very close to the heart of God
देवनी रुद्यानिकी चाला सनी
There are innumerable incidences
चप्पले ने
I was in touch with all his relatives in Delhi and also abroad
दिल्ली लो बाईट देशल गुड
I was in touch with his son also, Omkar Singh Chawda
Ah, Om
Omkar Singh Chawda
Omkar Singh Chawda नी आन कुमार
Ah, I met him
आन कल
All of them touched by many things
आलंदर कुड़ी इनकुरी चन्ना विष
How he acted by faith
विश्वासंग विश्वासम तो एला प्रवर्त
Now, menu card comes and says, Lord, I don't have money
मेनू कार्ड देगुन असे प्रवाह नाड़ डब्बु ले
Then Lord says, order what you want
प्रवाह नड़ नीक नच
Then he ordered roti and dal and roti
डाल रोटी
Simple, simple meal
सामान्य मेनू अटुनी बोज
And then waiter comes
अबड़ वेटर अस्त
A thali of rotis and dal
पल्लल रोटल
Then he keeps And then he prays again
माला प्रादन जैस
Lord, I don't have money
प्रवाह नाड़ डब्बु ले
And then he said, eat
अप्पड़ देवड़ नर्तिन
Then he gives thanks unto the Lord
इनका प्रभु को वांगनाल जप
And then he eats
दान तिन
You need guts to eat food without money
जेबल डब्बु लेकड़ होटल लो बोज देरी
He had that
आदे आन कुन्नी
Because he was very close to the heart of God
इदि देवन रुद्यानिच चाला सनी
He was abounding more and more in faith
विश्वासल एक्कुगा उंडे
That is how, he had joy, unspeakable and full of glory
आरकंगा चप्पन असक्किमुन मायमा इक्क
Even though you are not seeing him, he believed
आन चूडकपना विश्वास
Trusted him
आन नम्म
Because of the word of God, thus saved the Lord, thus saved the Lord, made him to believe God's word
देवड़ वाकिमुल राबिन यहो देवड़ इलास सलविच आ माटन बट्टी आ माटन बट्टी आन नम्म
He enjoys that dal roti
मंच यार ये रोटे पप्पु मंच बुज
And then had water
नील जागिन तर
Then waiter comes and gives the bill
अबड़ वेटर अच्छी बिल इस्त
Bill he sees
बिल जूस
Lord, I don't have money
प्रवाह नाड़ डब्बु ले
Then Lord tells him
अबड़ प्रवाह अन्नाड
Goes to, go to the counter
काउंटर देर केल बिल कट
कैसे जान
अरे जेबल डब्बु
फाइसा तो हाईन
जेबल डब्बु ले
Ah, how he goes, he had to pay
ये एल्टा डब्बु कट
But see the guts of this Brother Baxing
सर बक्सिंग यार के देरी अन्न जुड
He goes to the counter
काउंटर देर डब्बु कट
As he just goes to the near counter
काउंटर देर केल
One man enters the hotel
होटल ओका मंशी
Hey, Brother Baxing, when I am here, how can you pay? He takes the bill and he pays it
सावधार जी बक्सिंग यारु नी उंडे मेरे डब्बु कट पक्का जर निक अर्थान जप
Do you understand this?
इमेस तीर मिक अर्थ
When Brother Baxing started feeling hungry
सर बक्सिंग यार का आकल
When this conversation was going on between him and God
देवड़ की तनकी मजलो ये संभाषण जरुत
God was controlling the footsteps of that man
देवड़ आ व्यक्ति ओका अडुक जाडल नी नियंत्र
एकड़ एकड़ केल
एकड़ एकड़ केल
एकड़ एकड़ तिरिय
एकड़ एकड़ तिरिय
Finally, he brought him at the time, right time, when Brother Baxing reached the dust
एंड एप्रे ते बक्सिंग यारु बिल कट्या काउंटर देर की चेर आ समयन का व्यक्त
God controlled his movements
देवड़ आ व्यक्ति ओका अडुक
That is how God can work on our behalf
आरकंगा देवड़ मान पक्षंगा गुड़ा पंज
Brother Baxing's faith made a great impact on my life
बक्सिंग यार का विश्वासन आ जीत बहुप्रभाव
I exercised faith at many crucial times
चाला कृष्टम अटुनी परिस्थित लो देवनी विश्वास
I shared with them, God willing, today, tomorrow, day after tomorrow, something
रेप गनी एलुंडी गनी देवन चित
How you can trust him?
आये दियान नु विश्वास
To what extent you can trust him?
एंतवरक आन नु विश्वास
You have to trust him
आन नु विश्वास
Abound in faith more and more
विश्वासम लो अंतकंतकु वर्दिल
Now, C seventeen, the chapter of Luke's Gospel, verse five
लुकस्वाता पदेव दियम आयदो चुन
Where disciples prayed unto him
ये सिस्चुल आन वालकी आन विश्व
He asked them Asked him
आवाल अडिग
Increase our faith
माविश्वासम वृद्धि पोंद
And apostles said unto the Lord, increase our faith
Apostles, माविश्वासम वृद्धि पोंद प्रभु तो चप्प
So that is what we must also do
मानम कुड़े चेस
Oh Lord, increase our faith
प्रवाह माविश्वासन वृद्धि पोंद
As he come to chapter four, verse one
देशवान क्रश मध्रपत्रिका नालुक दियम मध्र
How you ought to walk and to please God, so you would abound more and more
मेर ये रितिक मेर एलाव नर्च देवन नु संतोष मावलन नेच कुने प्रकारमु मेर नर्च विषम लो मेर अंतकंतकु अभिरुद्धि नंद मिमुन वेड कुड़ी प्रभु नेसुन अनंद
He should abound more and more in faith
विश्वासम लो अंतकंतकु
When you do that
पनीर
Wonderful things, Lord will rot through you
अद्भुतमन विषम लो मान द्वारा प्रभु जर
May God help us that we may have increasing faith
अभिरुद्धि पोंदे विश्वासन कलिं
Where you could abandon yourselves into the everlasting arms of the Lord
मानली मानम विसर्जिंच नित्यम अटुनी देवने का बाहुल लोकी मान चेर
Total surrender at the feet of the Lord
पूर्ति आ मानल मानम प्रभु की समर्प
There is a saying
ओका
माट उंडी Man's extremity is God's opportunity to work
मान शन ओका विपरीतमन सिति देवड़ पंजे
When we come to end of ourselves
मानली माने एप्रे ते मुगिंपल
When you have raised your hands up
इनका चेद
I cannot do anything, Lord
नी एम चेल
It is from that point, Lord, we begin to work on your behalf
आम, आम, आ समयन ची प्रभु पंजे
That is what Jehoshaphaz did
योश्वाद जैस
Chronicles chapter twenty is a great example
रेंडो दिन तान लिरवा दियम गोप्पा माद्र
Great company came upon him
गोप्पा गुंपु आकड़ गया
Natural thing is, he feared
आ साहजंग जर्गे
But he entered into the house of God
देव मंदिर लो प्रवेश
Declared the first
आ विश्वासन
यंकार जुड़ा केम into the house of God
जुड़ा गोत्र वालंदर कुड़े देव मंदिर
Kith and kin, even the suckling child, they were all in the house
चिन्ना पिल्लाल पालु दागे पिल्लाल मोदल कुड़े विस्तु
Second Chronicles, chapter twenty, verse twelve
रेंडो दिन तान तान लिरवा दियम
Amazing prayer
आकड़ अद्भुतमन अटुनी प्राद
We have no strength against this great company
इन्तकोप्पा समुह नेदुक
Neither we know what to do, but our eyes are upon thee
मे मे एम चेल तोच मान कन्नुल मी मी देवन
That is a wonderful token of faith
विश्वासन की सम्माइ अद्भुतमन माद्र
We have no strength against this great company
ये गोप्पा समुह की वेतर
Therefore, he accepted his nothingness
आन ओका खाली तन नी नुप
He had come to end of himself
आन तन्नतन ओके मुगिंपल
Neither we know what to do
प्रवाह माके एंजल
Totally helpless situation
नीवे ये परिस्थित लो माक साय
And then he says
अपड़ अन्न
In English it says But our eyes are upon thee
कानिवा कन्नुल मी मी देवन
तिलुले मुंडी नीवे माग
नीवे माग
Wonderful expression
अद्भुतमन अटुनी
That means, we don't depend upon any person in this world
जारे कर्तव्य ने ते प्रवाह इनके यवर मिद कुड़े मी माधर
What is the central verse in the Bible?
बाइबिल लो नट मजलो नट
Psalm one hundred and eighteen, verse eight
न्यूटर पत्तियों दक्के तन एम दो
Ah, सावधार
मान अंदर चप्पस्त न्यूटर पत्तियों दक्के दियम एम मान शन नमुक यहो वान आश्रय राज्य नमुक यहो वान आश्रय
Ah, that is exemplified in various lives in the word of God
देवने का वाकिमुल अनेकमन ओके जीवताल ये ओका विष द्रुविकर
Even in the life of Brother Baxing
सर बक्सिंग यार के जीत
Even in the lives of some of the God servants
अनेकमन देवजल ओके जीत
When we trusted him
आन नु विश्वासम उंच
He has never let us down
एपुड़ कुड़ा आन मान ओदिलपेट
A famous verse in the Bible I like is
बाइबिल लो नट चाला पेर गंज नट ओक
Psalm thirty-five, verse one, thirty-four, verse one
नालुक मुपयो नालुक अक्के तन मोद
They looked unto him and were enlightened, and their faces were not ashamed
आन वाइप चूच आवाल मुकमुल इक्का लज्जिम पक वारु आन तड्डू चोड वारी वेलु
वारी मुकमुल एन्न नु लज्जिम पक
वारी मुकमुल एन्न लज्जिम
That is what will happen
आदि मान चेस
So today's lesson is
कवट ये रोज पाट
Trust him
आन नु विश्वास
Trust him
आन नु विश्वास
It is only then trusting him, you can walk worthy of God
आन नु विश्वास तेने आन तेगिन
Shall we pray?
प्रादन जस
Our loving heavenly Father
प्रेंगल
Our gracious and wonder
क्रूपकल देवा अद्भुताल जैस
We thank thee for thy word, which is generally settled in heaven
नी परलक परलक नित्यम का स्त्रप नी वाक्य
It does mean our personal experience, whenever we have come to thy presence with an intense desire to hear thy word, thou hast been so readily available unto us, to speak to us
प्रवाह मानुभव एप्रे ते मासक्तिक नी ओका मंदिरानी वाक्य नु मात माटल
Help us, Lord, that we may abound more and more in faith
प्रवाह विश्वासम लो अत्यधिक वृद्धि पोंद माक साय
The faith that we have now is not sufficient
प्रवाह इपुड़ मी कलिं विश्वासम चाल
Oh Lord, help us to trust thee more and more
प्रवाह इनके एक्कुगा मी नु विश्वास माक साय
So that thou could work on our behalf
मेर मान पक्षंगा पंज
And thus, thy name may highly be exalted and be glorified in our midst
तत्वारा नी नाम माम अत्यधिक हेच पच
Thank thee for this day that was given to us
प्रवाह ये दिन मान कन्नु
Lord, prepare us for tomorrow's ministry
एपुड़ दिन पर्च कुड़े मान
Give us good amount of rest in this night, if it is in, thy will wake us up tomorrow, so that we may be able to serve the acceptable
प्रवाह ये रात मागुनी मंच सुकम मी चित रेप दिन माम तनी ब्रत तनी मी दृष्ट कांगीकार पर्च
There may be a divine order at the time of the law
प्रवाह प्रेम देव कमन क्रम साय
Pray with thanksgiving, in the precious and sweet name of our Lord and our Savior, Jesus Christ
वन्दनमुल तो मान प्रभु रक्ष एसु कृष्ण प्रभ प्रशस्त मद्रम प्राद तन
प्रिलर तिरिगिरे पुदे काल मुमान पत्तिक मंदिर लो मान वाप्तिसाल उंड देवन वात वान अंतर तिरिगि सायंत्र रेप सायंत्र एड़ गंज तिरिपत्ते कुड़ी आद्वार गुड़ा प्रत्येक आद्वार गम कलिं The last कुड़ी तिरिगि यूथ ती सन्डे इवन कवट प्राद चैन मे बाग मेर पोंद प्रभु मान मन प्राद मुगिंप आश्चर्य मुगिं चैस ब्रदर संदर सेकंड फोर चैन सिस्टर संदर इकड़े बोज उड चुप तरी तंग प्रहाल पंच विस्थान तिरिगि तर रेप प्राव प्रत्येक बैट जम तिस कुन तर पलिक गंज शार्प गत गोद विल गोइंग तन देवनी प्रेम प्रभु कृष्ण क्रूप पर्शु दात्म देवनी सह मन दर किनी बुलोक लच बक्त सदा काल तोड़े नाड पिंच नग ब्रदर्स ब्रदर्स मात्र मेर ले ची आर डोर सुन बाई चैन पाट लप पाट